Order, and we'll start off with the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Hunter Cutt.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone will please join us in a moment of silence. Moving on is our agenda approval. And I believe there was a question about one of the items in the consent agenda. Anybody like to verbalize that?
Mr. Chair, we do have some questions about that, so if we could move that from the consent agenda under 2C down to 11D in the county manager's report.
So, the motion, just to clarify, is to move the train HVAC service agreements down to the county manager section of, which is section 11, make that from 2C to 11D, so that we can discuss that. So, we've got a motion by Vice Chairman Garrison and a second by Commissioner Wyatt. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote, all in favor. So, that leaves three items on the consent agenda, which is the tax refunds and releases, the county foreclosure update, of which there were actually none, just for the record, and the approval of our January 10th special minutes, January 10th regular minutes, and January 24th special meeting minutes. Is there a motion that we approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
A motion.
Motion by Commissioner Wyatt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hensley, is there any discussion?
Just to note, we did have one revision in the meetings as they were presented to us, those modifications were made and resubmitted.
That was in the, in the minutes, was just a correction of a typo, so duly noted. And we've got, is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the modified consent agenda, state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous? Up next on the agenda is public comment. Before we move into public comment, I just want to say thank you to those that have come out tonight, appreciate y'all being here, coming to participate in the county government, we appreciate seeing you. And we had, well, had three people, looks like one is withdrawn, is that correct Cindy?
Yeah.
Very good, thank you ma'am. So, that would move Mr. Tony Ponder to the top of the list. Mr. Ponder, if you go to the podium, sir, you've got three minutes.
Chairman Wetkell, Commissioners, I want to address your Hot Springs appointment to the planning board, but first, I'd like to finish my remarks from last meeting. In my opinion, you should, Commissioners, should immediately rescind the Anna Democratic vote to limit public comment of free speech. Three hundred years ago, Thomas Gordon, who framers relied heavily on for free speech wording in our U.S. Constitution, wrote, "Free speech censorship is an act of tyrants." Now, that planning board appointment went for Hot Springs. One of you Commissioners was quoted in the Citizen Times as saying that no Hot Springs resident applied for the position. Overlooked was a Spring Creek blogger who applied on November the 30th last year. She states that she has studied and worked in the land use planning for 24 years, overqualified perhaps, or maybe a woman. Why was this applicant overlooked? It bothers me that Hot Springs area and the rest of the county were insulted in the paper by this oversight, or perhaps overslight. Why? In her blog, savemadisoncounty.org, this blogger accused and is accusing this board of being the Rhino Express, that's Republican in name only. Where would she get such an idea? Is it because you are leaving the present, previous Democrat Board's governing apparatus in place? Is it because you want to prove a professional audit of county finances? Like how one department was $637,000 short, and yet they professed a half million dollar profit? Is it because you want to turn this county into a third world ice orbit running water line and a sewer line from Mars Hill to Marshall? Where is the infrastructure to support it? Talk about a half baked idea mess. Also, she is accusing the new Commissioner with the help of a high priced county paid lawyer of gutting our county land use plan for his personal profit. Economic development, I suppose. You can read her blog at savemadisoncounty.org for the details and more. I hope this oversight was an oversight on your part of this lady from Spring Creek who happens to be in the Hot Springs area. I hope it was an oversight on your part, because it does make you look bad in the paper and with the citizens of this county. No one likes criticism, but this blogger is a Ronald Reagan Republican, not that it matters.
Thank you, Mr. Ponder. Up next on the list is Marjorie Meisenheimer.
Good evening, Ms. Meisenheimer. Thanks for the opportunity to speak, I'm Marjorie Meisenheimer, this is Joey Sheehan, we're residents of Walnut, and we're here representing the Walnut Community Center, which, we're, I'm the newly elected president of the community center, Joey is the vice president, and I sent an email a couple days ago, but I wanted to introduce myself. So, we're just seeking, we want to update the terms of the lease, the original lease was 2003, and we would want to make sure everything is in order. We're excited to get going, right now, we're working on a survey to assess, we're going to hopefully have that out at the end of March, to put that out in the community to find out what the community wants the community center to be. So, that's one of the first things we're working on. Joey and I met last week with Chris Maney, Parks and Rec, to talk about the ball field and the grounds, because we know recreation's, we've got a critical need for ball fields. So, just, you know, trying to find out what's available for us, maybe thinking about grants in the future to get some playground equipment and all that sort of thing. So, we're just excited to get going, and, but before we can really get going, we just need to make sure that, you know, the lease is all up to date, so again, thanks for speaking. I went ahead and made your copies. We look forward to working with you.
Appreciate the evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions?
This is just the public comment part?
It's just public comment, yes, yeah.
But we appreciate it very much, thank you for coming out.
Thanks.
Thanks, pleasure to meet y'all. All right, that concludes our public comment portion of this evening's meeting. Thank everyone that participated, and for those of you that listened. Up next is Kate, and Kate, I'm going to murder your last name, probably.
Cyn Gogo.
All right, very good. We've got Kate Cyn Gogo with us with the Community Action Opportunities and the 2024 Community Services Block Grant Update.
Yes, hi.
Good day.
Good evening, thank you all for having me. Just a quick background, so Community Action Opportunities is a community action agency, we exist all over the country. Community Action Opportunities serves six counties in western North Carolina, so we are in McDowell, Madison, Bunkham, Henderson, Transylvania, and Polk counties. We are appointed by the governor to exist and serve these counties, so the CSBG funds, the Community Service Block Grant Funds are awarded to us every year. It is part of the process for us to submit an application and explain what it is that we're going to do with that money. So, in this upcoming fiscal year, our fiscal year runs July 1st to June 30th, so for our fiscal year 2024, for Madison County, we are receiving $42,219, that's just about $7,000 less than what we have received this current year. However, we have not decreased any of our targets for this upcoming year, we are going to still operate exactly as we have been, and what that really looks like is we have a coach, who is our life works coach here in Madison County, and she is stationed at, or excuse me, at AB Tech at the NC Works office, and we help people who are living on limited resources improve their lives, our goal is to help people get full time living wage work, we help people with training and education, and we also help them with financial capabilities. So, just to say, a highlight that you won't see in the big old packet that I submitted is that this current fiscal year, we actually got funds for COVID, and we subcontracted, some, excuse me, subcontracted about 6,000 of those dollars to my sister's place, we do have some really great partnerships here in Madison County, and so we're looking forward to continuing our services. We are continuing to explore additional funds, we've got a couple of grant applications out there, because we did receive a few thousand dollars less this year than we, for this upcoming fiscal year than we currently have right now, so we're on the hunt for more money, and we don't expect any kind of decrease in services. So, those are the big takeaways from the packet, and just wanted to see if you all have any questions.
No, you go right ahead, go ahead.
Kennedy, I've noticed that the grant application deadline was January 13th, I take it we've got a continuation on that?
Absolutely, yes, yep, and part of the reason for that is, and this actually happens every year, and this year, they actually backed up our deadline a month sooner, so it's usually due in mid February, this year, they had it due in mid January. Our fringes and new insurance rates don't come out until the very end of December, and part of our budget application is to include those new rates for the upcoming year, so we always work with the state, and we always tell them, you know, this is approximately what day we're going to get this in. We did submit this a few days late, but the state was super happy with it, so, yep.
And the target for Madison County is, in the past, well, this past year was eight families served, and that's the same?
Yes, sir, exactly, yep, and that's the minimum, we typically exceed that target, but that's, we, we kind of have a formula for, we are allowed to be within 80 to 120% of any one of our targets that we set, so for our enrollments, we try to set it as a minimum, so that we can exceed that with pride, which we like to do.
Very good, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thanks for joining us.
Thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you. All right, up next on the agenda is our District Attorney Seth Banks, coming to speak on behalf of the Courthouse Committee in regarding the courthouse building maintenance and repair recommendations that that committee has been tasked with previously.
Thank you all. Thank you for the honor of being able to address you today, and I would also thank you for the honor of appointing me to this committee. You're in this time when we hear a lot in the news about contentious meetings and public life being very contentious and going back and forth, it was, it was a real honor to be able to serve with a group of people who really, I believe, had the best interests of Madison County at heart, discussed the issues with the courthouse frankly and honestly, and came to a group of recommendations unanimously on all points, and so it was, it was wonderful to serve with this, on this committee, so thank you for that honor. So, just by way of review, I know you all remember back in December, you heard from Judge Baker, as well as Mark Cody and the architect with Lord Aiken Sargent, Karen Gravel, in regards to the ultimate recommendation of our committee. And so, the primary recommendations, once again, the conclusion that we came to ultimately was that the courthouse is nearing the end of its life as a, as a dedicated courthouse facility, I'm sure that the courthouse will have many other uses, but there, the limited square footage, as well as the parking and the other limitations, made it difficult to imagine how we could move forward in the current facility with court services. At that time, this commission gave our committee a, a further charge to come back with some secondary recommendations, understanding that, that this process may take years, what are some renovations, or better, better termed, I think, which is the term on the agenda, that's used on the agenda, what are some maintenance items that would make the courthouse safer in the short term? And so, the secondary recommendations, once again, all the recommendations that you will hear tonight from me relate to immediate health and safety concerns, both to the citizens of Madison County that use the courthouse, as well as folks that work there day in and day out. That was the focus of the committee, and it was very important in our discussions to focus on those items that were essential, understanding that at some point in the future, it's the intention of this board to construct a new courthouse. While some of these issues that I'll highlight have been well known for years, and were known prior to the engagement of the architect last year, it's important to note that each item that we have listed is based on health and safety concerns that were highlighted in the report that you previously received from the architect, from Lord Aiken Sargent. Now, I do want to talk just a little bit about the process of the committee, because I think that's important, and once again, I think it has been a thorough process, I believe we've met three additional times since you heard the report, it was either two or three, I was trying to reconstruct our meetings in my calendar, and I, it was, I believe it was three additional times that we've sat down, each of these meetings, we've heard from the architect again, and talked about the various options. The recommendations are derived from the section of the Lord Aiken Sargent Report entitled Essential Scope, the, but the committee did endeavor to cut the proposal down, so the original report from Lord Aiken Sargent talked about the essentials scope, and just addressing the issues that needed to be addressed, and the dollar figure seemed pretty high to us, given the fact that the, the commission had committed at a previous meeting to build a new courthouse in the future. So, we, we asked the, the architect to go back and requested that the essential scope be narrowed, she initially delivered a revised recommendation in December, and then we asked again that she go back and narrow the scope further, and we asked the architect specifically, in, in being concerned about the budget, obviously, we asked for a ceiling for expenditures on renovation should be no more than half a million dollars. With this information, Ms. Gravel did deliver an amended report to the committee in January, complete with cost estimates. Now, I will say, we took that report, and then we narrowed it further in terms of the recommendations that we are providing to you. I believe Mandy probably has the, the full report, I've got a couple of copies as well, if you want to see that report, but we, we took those recommendations and then further narrowed them for the presentation today. So, what are the recommendations? And I have, I have a one pager, I did not get this in in time to get this in your packet, but I'll, I'll leave this with Mandy, I've got copies for everyone for distribution at the appropriate time, but essentially, the recommendations relate to health and safety concerns, once again, new flooring and interior paint. I'll talk about in just a moment, some of the mold remediation issues that I believe need to be addressed, but new flooring and interior, interior paint relate to that, it's been years since new carpet was installed, for those who may not be aware, the courthouse has had mold issues for years related to water inundation, both from the basement and from the roof, so in regards to the flooring that is present in the courthouse now, it needs to be replaced, potentially with something even more durable and more hypoallergenic than some of the carpeting, some of the areas will have to be carpeted, but it might be prudent to look at some other options in some of the work areas, specifically in the courthouse, and the clerk's office, and the district attorney's office. In addition to that, and going hand and glove with the new flooring and interior paint recommendation that the committee gives to you, mold remediation needs to be done and continued. A few years ago, this process occurred where essentially a firm was hired and brought in to dry out the courthouse, the architect believed that process needed to be done again, and gave some recommendations on that, and we would argue to you that that process needs to be undertaken for the, the air quality issues in the courthouse itself, and those who are using it. In addition to that, and this was one of the points that Commissioner Garrison, who served on the committee with us, emphasized, and rightly so, there, there has been historically an issue with ingress and egress into the courthouse, there's only one primary way to get in and out of the courthouse, and that's the front door, up the front steps. There's not an easy way to address this, is the long the short of it, the, the architect initially came back with a recommendation that a second entrance be constructed on the first floor, the committee had some concerns with that on a number of levels, one, the, the area on the first floor is so compact, that we didn't really understand the utility of spending a lot of money to, to essentially put another entrance on the first floor that would be underutilized and might not provide much in the way of utility, even in the event of an emergency. So, we asked the architect to essentially come up with a concept for an exterior metal stair that would come from the second floor, I think the envisioned place for this would be probably in the grand jury room area, and that is essentially on the back side of the courthouse, on the right side, and this, this metal stairway would be an emergency exit only, and have a door, and essentially be for emergency egress only. In addition, the architect did come back with an idea as well, in terms of providing a retractable ladder that would be in some way affixed to the balcony, we thought this might be a good idea as well, the cost for this, and I'll, I'll show you the cost in just a second for, for these various items, but the cost for this would be essentially de minimis, I think it's $1,300 is what the, what the architect estimated this would cost, the only thing about this is, obviously, given the nature of that balcony, this would have to be cleared with the fire marshal to see if this would be a viable emergency measure for egress from the courthouse. In addition, the architect in her essential scope that she provided to us in January, so this is once again the second time she came back to us with recommendations, she recommended complete replacement of the roof system, and all the downspouts and, and the guttering. Once again, the committee and its, its efforts to, to safeguard the, the trust that you've placed in us, and, and once again, be good stewards of the taxpayers' monies, believe that at this time, that what the commission should do is, is assess the roofing, hire someone to assess the roofing, and the downspouts and the guttering, to determine whether there's active water infiltration, the architect believed that there might be some water infiltration, there may be some mitigation that could be provided that would come up cheaper essentially than just replacing the entire roof, there has been some work done on the roof in the not too distant past, and so there may be some, some steps short of replacing the entire roof that could be done, that would be more cost effective in the short term, and provide some of the, the protection against water, water infiltration that the architect was concerned about and the mold issues. Finally, the, the committee did highlight a concern that wasn't necessarily in the architect's scope of work, but I think is, is well taken, given some of the concerns about the continued safety of the courthouse, there's also been some safety concerns in the, in the fairly recent past, a improved fire and burglary system, alarm system might be warranted, again, when a recent safety concern occurred, I believe that there was, there wasn't anybody watching the stores, it were, there was no monitoring that allowed for a quick, a quick assessment of the situation, so that folks could, could respond to the scene, so improved, an improved system is a final recommendation of the committee. So, costs and possible funding, we also discussed this in a robust way, once again, the total estimated cost for recommendation, for the recommendations outlined by the committee is $253,000 and some change. Once again, the architect also recommended, in addition to this adding for 28% for escalation, market and construction contingencies, the estimate excludes any recommended roof-related repairs, so this, this number does not include any possible roof-related repairs that might and the downspouts and the guttering to determine whether there's active water infiltration. The architect believed that there might be some water infiltration. There may be some mitigation that could be provided that would come up cheaper, essentially, than just replacing the entire roof. There has been some work done on the roof in the not-too-distant past. And so, there may be some steps short of replacing the entire roof that could be done, that would be more cost-effective in the short term and provide some of the the protection against water infiltration that the architect was concerned about and the mold issues. Finally, the committee did highlight a concern that wasn't necessarily in the architect's scope of work, but I think is well-taken. Given some of the concerns about the continued safety of the courthouse, there's also been some safety concerns in the fairly recent past. An improved fire and burglary system, alarm system, might be warranted. Again, when a recent safety concern occurred, I believe that there wasn't anybody watching the stores, it were. There was no monitoring that allowed for a quick quick assessment of the situation so that folks could respond to the scene. So, improved, an improved system is a final recommendation of the committee. So, costs and possible funding. We also discussed this in a robust way. Once again, the total estimated cost for recommendation for the recommendations outlined by the committee is two-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars and some change. Once again, the architect also recommended, in addition to this, adding for twenty-eight percent for escalation, market and construction contingencies. The estimate excludes any recommended roof-related repairs. So, this number does not include any possible roof-related repairs that might come back when that assessment is made. And those for the upgrade of the alarm system, but the architect, when this was brought to her attention, said those costs would probably be fairly small in the grand scheme of things. So, potential funding sources, and once again, I don't have to highlight this for you all, but it was a frequent topic of conversation in our committee meetings. Once again, I'll remind the commission that the county was provided in the last legislative session with three-point-eight million dollars by the General Assembly. They allocated specifically for courthouse renovations or construction, and that could be a potential funding source. Another potential funding source are the facility funds that are required to be used for the upkeep of the courthouse and related facilities. And that's the statute for that's in seven A, three oh four. And once again, it's clearly laid out. Those facilities funds are to be used for that purpose. It is noteworthy, you're in the last six months of the fiscal year, last fiscal year, the clerk of courts records indicate that thirty-eight thousand dollars, a little over thirty-eight thousand dollars in facilities and jail fees were remitted from the court system to the county. That's not historically been a line item, which explains some of the backlog issues in terms of maintenance that the county, that the current courthouse structure has faced. But that, though, some of those monies could be used for this purpose as well. I'm happy to answer any questions. And once again, I have, my one-pager highlights the individual costs of each of these recommendations or estimated costs. I'm not in the construction trades. I know some of you are, so I won't. These are the costs that were afforded to us, and I know they're going up daily, but these are the costs that the architect gave us in their report. So, if the commission has any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, Seth. Anybody got any questions?
The only question I got is, that's two-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars. That's not on our packet that we got here. But does that include the carpet, the paint, and maybe the stairs? Is that what?
So, I can go down through the individual costs. The new flooring and interior paint, the number is one-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars. The mold remediation came out, the estimate was twenty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-five dollars. The estimate to construct a new metal stairway and door for emergency egress from the building, that's forty-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. And then, the retractable ladder that was recommended by the architect as a potential exit would be thirteen-hundred-and-sixty dollars. And so, those are, that comes, if my math is correct, that comes to that number. And that would exclude the twenty-eight percent escalation, market and construction contingencies that the architect recommended that the commission build into the budget.
So, the steps and the ladder is needed, or just?
So, during the discussions with the architect, it was pointed out that, she pointed out that, strictly speaking, the second floor exit, the way the courthouse is constructed, any potential metal staircase that came down from the outside would be too close to an existing staircase to essentially comply, in the strict sense, with fire code. And so, the thought was that for thirteen hundred dollars, you know, if we could provide this additional way out, if the building caught fire, it would be worth the county's money to just have that there in the event of a catastrophe. And so, I think that was the logic that, in doing both, given the fact that the number was so low for that ladder. Now, we didn't get into what that would look like, how we'd change the exterior appearance of the building, which, you know, is iconic, obviously, and we wouldn't want to change, but that's an issue, certainly.
The metal staircase would be sort of what I envisioned, based on the description we got, would be sort of an old-school fire escape-looking type thing, really. And then, the ladder would be something more or less what you would almost kind of expect for someone to have in their home, or if they lived in an apartment, where they would actually be able to drop it out the window or whatever they needed to do in order to exit the building as quickly as possible.
I believe that's a more succinct description than I gave.
It's all good, no worries. I'm not a lawyer, I don't get paid by the word, so it's all good. Thank you, Seth. We appreciate that. Anybody else have any additional questions?
I just want to appreciate your leadership. All those that served on that work group, that committee did an excellent job. That could have been a very continuous process, but it actually flowed very well. There's a lot of valuable discussion in it. Words like "immediate," "essential," "safety," "security," and "sustainability" are words that kind of encompass the recommendations from that work group. So, it's things that try to get by with the least amount of expense, knowing that we're moving forward with a new courthouse project. So, they were good stewards of the county's money. So, I appreciate that. And as far as the discussion with knocking a hole in the wall downstairs and putting the door, I think it's pretty clear that if we do that, we're funneling, still funneling everyone upstairs, downstairs into a narrow lobby, and they're actually going to go by the front door to get to another door. So, there wasn't much logic in that. Some of the concerns, District Attorney Banks points out, even in putting a metal staircase at the back, technically going out one room to get to the emergency exit, if you were building a new building, would not suffice. You know, we're trying to make safety recommendations, and that leads me to the last part. All these are recommendations to the board.
Yeah.
You know, the board can ultimately do what it wants, but they were trying to keep the dollar figure down low enough where the remainder of that courthouse crap money can still be utilized to actually help the courthouse instead of putting lipstick on the one we got.
And I want to echo those sentiments that that committee did an excellent job. We appreciate the dedication and the seriousness that they put into it. And also, whenever you appoint a committee, a lot of times, it doesn't necessarily, the budget is not necessarily always one of the committee's biggest considerations, and we greatly appreciate the attention that your committee spent on the budget. But there was a, you know, the simple fact of the matter is, the building was built, I believe, nineteen oh seven. Am I right about that?
Yes.
And today, in twenty twenty-three, we live in a much different world than how that building, what that building, the world that that building was constructed for. And I think it's essential that we do the best we can with the building we have. Because obviously, to, you know, that building has a lot of, it's got a lot of historical significance to the county. But from a practicality standpoint, the building is no longer practical for what it needs to be used for. And we recognize that, and we appreciate your committee and the recommendations that they've made, and thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Three things to note. One is, as far as how the funding goes to move forward to that, this board will also need to work with the Finance Director and then the interim county manager regarding not only these funds, but also the allocation of funds for the expansion of courthouse offices. Should be duly noted that the courthouse funds that have historically been taken, the fees have all been spent on the courthouse. There's been this rumor that it hasn't been. It's been absorbed into the general budget by previous administrations by the Finance Department, and that's not factual. In fact, the money's been, was designated, was taken for courthouse and has been used for the courthouse. Saying all that to say that it will be a consideration of this board at some point to think about using some of that three-point-eight million to pay for these necessary renovations and to also pay for the monthly cost of the extra billing rental. And I would recommend that we task the interim county manager and the Maintenance Director, Jesse Roberts, to begin immediately pursuing these objectives. And that this group has now finished all the tasks that we have asked of them as a board or a committee, and that, other than having one more meet to approve their minutes, I think it will be opportunity for them to be dissolved and move forward with other parts of this process.
We'd be remiss if we didn't mention the help from the state legislature in regards to the funding that will be ultimately directed towards these improvements to the old structure and then also potentially down payment on a new one.
Yes, Chairman.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Seth.
All right, up next on the agenda, we have our Emergency Management Coordinator and Fire Marshal, Louis Roberts. Louis?
I have one more. Do you have any action we need to take on that as far as the recommendation due to? Very good. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, you're fine, no worries. Come on up, Louis. I should have asked that question myself, thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
So, tonight, we're here tonight with information on two of our fire districts in the county. I don't actually need any action from the board. It's just, this is just an information session. So, the Marshall Fire Department currently has a large portion in the outer areas of the Smoky Mountain Fire District that has been receiving services and not paying their fire taxes. And the entire rural area of the Hot Springs Fire Department is not receiving any fire taxes due to the Fire Protection District never being established. All the information that I have for you tonight comes directly either from general statute or from articles published by the School of Government. So, we'll start out with Hot Springs. Due to the rural fire tax district, tax district currently not existing in the rural areas being serviced by Hot Springs Fire Department, they have requested that the county consider the creation of a new Rural Fire Protection District. The Rural Fire Protection Districts are authorized under NC General Statute sixty-nine dash twenty-five point one. The establish of this type of district is accomplished by the Board of Commissioners receiving a petition signed by at least thirty-five percent of the residents in the proposed district. Usually, this petition is circulated initially by the Fire Department itself. This allows them to speak directly to the affected residents and gives a good avenue for them to get some public relations on the issue. Once a valid petition has been received by the Board of Commissioners, the board must call a special election in the proposed district on whether or not to establish the district and to levy the rural district tax. The statute sets the maximum tax rate at fifteen cents per one hundred dollars in assessed property valuation in that district. Once the election is complete, if the majority of voters participating in the referendum approve the ballot issue, the Board of Commissioners may establish the district. This district, according to general statute, is a municipal corporation, which is a separate legal entity from the county in which it lies. And as per general statute, the district must have a governing board which consists of a three-member Fire Protection District Commission, which we all know of as Fire Commissioners, to govern the district. The commission is appointed by and serves at the discretion of and under the supervision of the Board of Commissioners. Board of Commissioners may also choose to serve as that district's fire commission if it sees fit. And that is what has been requested by the Hot Springs Fire Department. The Marshall Fire Department, which is currently providing services in the Smoky Mountain Fire District, has a large portion on the outskirts that lies outside of their six-mile insurance district that, for whatever unknown reason, was not initially included in the Rural Fire Protection District. So, the Marshall Fire Department has requested that the Rural Fire Protection District be extended to include these areas. Expansion of a Rural Fire Protection District is allowed under North Carolina General Statute sixty-nine dash twenty-five point eleven. This district may be increased by the application of at least two-thirds majority of the property owners in the proposed district. In addition to this two-thirds majority, it is required to have a unanimous recommendation in writing from the Fire Commissioners currently serving. The existing district must also have the approval of a majority of the members of the Board of Directors of the Fire Department. And finally, it must have the approval of the Board of Commissioners. Once these requirements have been met, the Board of Commissioners must provide notice and conduct a public hearing. After the public hearing has been conducted, the Board of Commissioners will either approve or deny the expansion of the Rural Fire Protection District. And that is also subject to that fifteen cents per one hundred maximum. Just so you're aware of all the possible options, there is another option that the board can pursue. This is the creation of a Fire Service District. This type of district is covered in North Carolina General Statute one fifty-two A dash three oh one. And unlike the Rural Fire Protection District, a service district is not a municipal corporation and has no independent authority. It is established and maintained by the county under the control of the Board of Commissioners. To create a service district, the board must find that, number one, there is a need for providing fire protection in that district. Number two, it is impossible or impractical to provide these services countywide. Number three, is economically feasible to provide the proposed services in the district without unreasonable or burdensome annual tax levies. And number four, there is a demand from those living in the proposed district for the creation of that. In making this determination, the board must consider a number of factors, including the resident or seasonal population and the population density of the district, the appraised value of property subject to taxation in the district, the tax, present tax rates of the county and any municipalities or other special districts in which the proposed district is located, and the ability of the proposed district to sustain the additional taxes necessary to support the district. After the board makes these appropriate findings, a report must be prepared containing a map of the proposed district, a statement showing that the district meets the standards listed in general statute, and a plan for providing the fire protection services in the district. This report must be made available to the public, and the board must then provide notice and hold a public hearing. Once these requirements have been met, the board must choose to establish or may choose to establish the service district via a resolution. So, the Rural Fire Protection District and the Fire Service District are the two options that are available, but it is the request of both fire departments that the county pursue a Rural Fire Protection District for Hot Springs and the expansion of a Rural Fire Protection District for the Smoky Mountain District. And again, I do not need any action from the board tonight. I just merely wanted to keep you all informed as to the requests of the fire departments in order to allow them to receive proper tax funding for the areas they are currently serving for free. Any questions?
Louis, I noticed in our packet, there's just an example, a draft of a notice of public hearing from the Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, that's for the service district.
Yeah. Well, that's, it says Fire Protection Service District. So, it's a combination of both. So, it's a difficult play of words there when you use fire protection and then service district.
Yeah, well, that's the language that's used in the general statutes. You've got a Rural Fire Protection District, and then you've got a Fire Protection Service District.
Is it safe to say, though, that this information? Well, let me ask, why is this information being brought to this board? Are those fire districts going to be pursuing the steps of petitioning thirty-five percent of the residents and moving forward to solicit for a referendum for fire protection district expansions?
Yeah. So, I've spoken with both chiefs, and they are prepared to do any legwork that is required of them to obtain the signatures on the petitions to meet those requirements.
Historically, from my understanding, is that all the fire departments had opportunity when they originally established these fire protection districts to do it, all of them moving forward. Some opted not to expand that into the rural areas, and because of that lack of expansion, I think they had a four-mile jurisdiction. So, there's some fire departments, such as the Smoky Mountain, that are actually, Marshall is actually reaching out all the way to Little Pine, for instance, far beyond the original four miles of their taxable fire service, I mean, fire protection district.
Yeah, and like I said, the unknown reason on why that was initially done that way, but they only went a certain mileage away from the town of Marshall with that.
And I also understand that Hot Springs has some areas where they're servicing, I'm sorry, country has service areas they're servicing, they're actually going through Hot Springs to get to those areas.
Yeah. Well, the residents are current, they're in the Hot Springs District, but they're being serviced by country, and that's a mapping issue.
Yeah. And is that something that's going to be addressed in all of this process? Very good. Thank you, Louis.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Louis? No, I think you're off the hook for tonight, Louis.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, appreciate the work you put into that.
All righty, up next on the agenda is Co-op Extension Director Elizabeth Ayers. Elizabeth, how are you?
Well, y'all are.
Doing well, thank you. We like the new floors.
Love the new floors. They're beautiful. We needed a facelift.
Absolutely.
So, I am here tonight. I know it sounds strange to be asking for this in February, so this was something that was requested of in August. And just due to other things that needed to be looked at by the board with other agenda items, we got pushed to February. That's just what I was. February. That's just what I was told. So sorry that this is late in the request. But it is for our COLIS or our standard of living. So Governor Cooper in July gave state employees a 3.5% raise. So y'all, on average, pay 50% of salaries to us, and then the state pays 50% of salaries here at Cooperative Extension. So we are just asking for our 50% match that was provided by the state. So we are considered a send-in county, which means that y'all have the option to choose to either match that or not. Y'all have the option to have us included in county raises, which we haven't been in the past, but y'all have the opportunity to do that as well. So we're not what's considered a lock-in. So if you hear those two different terms, so lock-in is whatever the state does, y'all are required to match, but we are considered a send-in county, so y'all have the option to do that or to not. So what you see in front of you is our county salary change sheet, and you can see per employee, we do have one employee who is 100% county. Of course, she is not included in this because this is for matching the state, the state employees. And the total for this is $4,768. That includes all five employees, and that does include our FICA, you know, the insurance, all, all of the fringe benefits are included in that. This is also, on this change form effective would be July 1 of last year, but of course, that is up to y'all as well. So here again, I apologize that did not get landed on the agenda until February. We had requested it in August, and it just didn't happen until today.
Understood.
So we're thankful for that. Any questions about?
So currently, what is, what's the ratio of, of these individual salaries right now?
So I can tell you that. So we're trying to get to a solid 50-50, but some of us are 60-40, and some of us are 50-50. Only one other person is 77% state and 22% county. Yes.
There was some discussion that around that somewhere along the way in this past cycle that somebody did give it and a bunch, or the rest didn't.
The county raise.
The county raise, correct. We did not get the county raise. Now, our county employee got it. She's, she's 100% county. She's our 4-H program assistant. So she, she was eligible and did receive that. Yes, but, but the rest of us did not. Correct.
Anybody else have any questions for Ms. Ayers? Thank you, Elizabeth. Appreciate all you do with this building and.
Thank you.
You guys, it's incredibly utilized, and we appreciate you letting us at least temporarily set up digs in here as well. We thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And floor does look great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You guys are always very accommodating for us, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Chairman Winkle, I would recommend that we task our interim county manager to work with Ms. Ayers and with the Finance Department to look and see where we were at then and versus what the request is for now, and also see how that applies since this is a mid-year budget request that would have implications there, and then bring us back some type of free address or recommendation at the next meeting.
Make that in the form of motion?
I'll do so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we've got a motion by Commissioner Garrison, second by, by Commissioner Hensley. And is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda this evening is County Attorney Donnie Laws, the National Opioid Settlement Update. Go ahead, Donnie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we were involved in the original opioid settlement. And we've been receiving money from that settlement. That lawsuit had a certain number of defendants in it, certain distributors, there were actually three of the major distributors. But the first lawsuit that was filed, and only those defendants were approved in the settlement. That overall settlement was approximately $26 billion. And in the distribution of the states and the counties, Madison County got its allotted distribution, and we have been receiving money since last summer, and those will be paid over an 18-year period. They're front-end loaded, and I would guess we probably received $150,000 to $250,000.
$158,000.
$158,000. What I'm here to tell you about now is that there was another lawsuit that was running behind this one that was against two specific manufacturers, Teva and Allergen, and against three pharmacies, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. We received notice on January 27th that that lawsuit has been settled, and the total payout on it is $20 billion, and states and counties will be receiving $17 billion of that. That, all of those are front-end loaded too, so we should be receiving additional monies. It's the kind of settlement that, that North Carolina has approved it, but each individual municipality will have to sign off with a resolution saying that we want to opt-in. If a certain percentage does not opt-in, then the settlement would not be approved. The final date to approve the opt-in is April the 18th. When I got this notice, they, they told us that we would be getting a separate email that would come sometime in mid to late February and up through March with a package with a proposed resolution and all of the documents for you to opt-in. It would be my intention to have those to present at your March meeting because that will, I mean, if we want to be involved in it, we need to take action. I'm assuming, since it's for money to us, basically without any ties except whether we opt-in to the A category or the B category, that this is something that you're interested in taking, and I will proceed to get that information and have it to you at the March meeting.
You need a motion to take action on that, Donnie?
I just want you to tell me that this is money that you are going to want, and that I need to be tasked with taking all of action to gather it and bring it to you to consider at your March meeting, which I would highly recommend that you do.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we would like to do that for sure, and Madam Clerk, if you'll make sure that that appears on the agenda for, for March. And I assume, Donnie, that this will probably likely come with the same strings attached that the, that the original settlement had.
It will come with the same, we've already got a framework that is there to use and disperse this money. If we approve the settlement, I would anticipate getting additional checks in the summer or the early fall. And, and the majority of, of these monies, Teva is going to pay up to $3.34 billion over 13 years with 1.2 front-loaded. Allergen is going to pay up to $2.02 over seven years. CVS, $4.9 billion over 10. Walgreens, $5.52 over 15. Walmart will pay up to $2.74 billion in 2023, and all payments will be paid within five years. So the majority of this money is going to be front-loaded. So I, I would think we'll probably actually be getting more in early on than what we've gotten out of the original settlement.
Well, and the nice thing about that settlement was structured so that we could actually bank the money to, to make it last for programs that extend beyond the settlement period.
That is the, the goal of it, to create programs that are, that you can sustain. And, you know, it sounded like that first set of money was going to be a whole lot, and they start giving it to you. It's not, but then now you're thinking about doubling that money once this comes in, and there's still the lawsuits that are out. So, good times.
And if we did the math based on what you said, the lawyer had made $3 billion?
Yeah, that, that, that's what was the proof. Settlement over $20 billion, $17 billion will be used by participating states and states.
I wasn't included. That being said, it's because some lawyer decided that's enough. They poisoned us, they destroyed our communities. I'll be glad to take CVS and these medical industry, their dollars, to reinvest in, in our families and communities for all they robbed from us through this crazy opioid hysteria.
Be nice if we could use that.
Those lawyers set the stage for this, not our, not our state ones, but others did.
Right. Be nice if we could use that for foster care and things of that nature, though, wouldn't it? All right, very good. Thank you, Donnie.
Your turn.
Appreciate it. Next up, back by popular demand, our Finance Director, Carrie Ledford.
Good evening, gentlemen, Chairman. So before you, you have Budget Amendment Number Eight. This amendment records additional funds to the Health Department through the M-HAT Grant, which is the Mental Health Awareness Training Grant, an amount of $62,500, as well as additional state funding. Also, see the recording of the COVID-19 Confinement Support Grant for the Sheriff's Office, an amount of $76,352.27 approved at your last meeting. For your approval is the line item movements from within your maintenance department, moving from the salary lines to professional services and to the building maintenance lines. Your library has accepted additional donations from the Friends of the Library in the amount of $3,186. You will also see that we have received an additional $10,050.70 in opioid settlement funds this month. Here, too, is the recording of the additional revenue generated by the quarter cent sales tax, the amount of $52,432.71, and these funds will be distributed to the Board of Education pending your approval of this amendment.
And this, just for the record, this budget amendment also makes the accommodations for the HVAC contracts that we will be discussing a little bit later in the, in tonight's agenda.
That's correct.
Assuming that those are approved, the, the money is already being moved into its proper channels.
That's correct.
Do have just a few quick questions. One is the, just to make sure, I'm interpreting this right, under the maintenance that we're having to use lap salaries to increase funding for gas operating and, and service agreement?
That's correct.
So, so that's say, obviously, we didn't have enough money allocated for gas operating, and we're having the service agreement as well. It's going to come out of lap salaries, not as standard budgeted stuff.
Yes.
Second thing, just clarifying and noting, under the Sheriff's Office says budgeted overtime to the salary line. Does that mean that overtime money is being moved into the regular salary line?
He, the sheriff budgeted an overtime line when the budget was adopted, and now as we, he needs that to pay out the overtime, we're moving it into the salary, because it's the only way our system will accept that.
That's what I want to make sure of.
That's correct.
Awesome. Thank you for that clarity. And I think that's all I have.
So for the record, it's, it's money that was budgeted for overtime, but it's being moved into the appropriate.
To pay the salary.
To be able to pay it. Yes, sir.
Very good. All right. Anybody have any questions for Carrie in regards to tonight's budget amendment? So hearing no questions, we need a motion to approve the, the budget amendment?
I make a move. We approve the budget amendment.
So we've got a motion by Commissioner Hensley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt. Is there any additional discussion?
I think it's sometime I want to discuss, just as a general thing with finance and other interim county manager regarding cell tower fees. There's been some questions brought up about that recently, nothing directly related to this.
Okay. All right. So any discussion in regards to the budget amendment before us? Hearing none, move to a vote. All in favor of the budget amendment? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next is January's financial reports. At the top of the page, you'll see that we're at 58.33% into the budget year. And on the second page, you'll see that for the general fund, we've received 69.26% of our revenues, and our expenses are at a 48.5%.
Is that on par for where we should be, Carrie?
Yes.
Traditionally?
Yes, our expenses are lower than where, what we normally are. That's, that's good.
I missed that somewhere in the packet, because I don't remember seeing it.
Page number it is on yours.
I don't remember seeing it. Let me get, I'm getting down.
Should be on the second page of the financial report.
It was the beginning of your packet, Carrie?
The very first thing is that my budget amendment.
Right, but that's got all the contracts and everything with it, correct?
Oh, does, okay. I don't, I don't know how it's sent to you. I'm not sure. I'm sorry.
Here we go, right here. Coming your way. We've got that.
It's, I think, well, I don't know.
Ford Engine, hard copy. I'm not sure where it's at, Digital 203.
It's way past the.
You got to get through all the contracts and everything.
The train contract, that's what it is. There it is.
Yeah.
I do remember seeing it.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Carrie on that? That's, doesn't require any action. That's just for our information. Anybody have any questions while she's before us? Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Have a good night. All right, up next, we have Vice Chairman Garrison will be presenting or leading the discussion regarding the potential creation and/or reinstitution of a, or, or the reviving of, I guess would be the best way to say it, of a 911 Advisory Board. Floor is yours, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. Winkle, I was just looking for something. The discussion has been brought up of late as far as how those that work outside of the county, that aren't county entities, what their recourse is for technical and professional issues within the 911's dispatch system. And so it brought the question that there originally was a 911 Advisory Board function that's nothing more than that but to advise. Do we, do we determine if that was in fact, how that dissolved, or?
When we, when we had the discussion in preparing the agenda, there was a thought that that was, that there had been originally set up a 911 Advisory Board. I believe that former Commissioner Eddie Fox, is that not mistaken? Louis, can you add anything to this discussion?
I was not aware of any additional word. I know that several years back, the first law student, first dispatch, we did have that requirement of accreditation.
Do you mind coming up so people that are watching at home can hear what you're saying?
It was when Teresa was there.
Okay, so it was when Teresa was, was Director of 911?
We need your expertise, Louis.
I don't know if I've got expertise. Information I have.
Louis was the dispatch for years, too.
Yeah, so my knowledge of, I'm not sure of when Eddie was here, but I do know that when Teresa, we first went to Emergency Medical Dispatch certifications, part of our accreditation process was to have a 911 Advisory Board, and Teresa had that instituted then. But that, that's the extent of my knowledge of it.
So that was part of the accreditation process originally, but there, I know, like, for example, with the Health Department, they've got to be reaccredited every so often.
Yeah.
Is that, is, is that not the process for 911?
I am not sure of where the accreditation, I know ours has expired for 911, but I'm not sure of where that is currently, if we're seeking reaccreditation or not, so.
Okay. Sounds like another task for the interim county. Sounds like another task for the interim county manager.
Thank you, Louis, for stepping up.
Thank you, Louis, appreciate that information. You might want to stick close case any other questions come up.
When the topic originally came up, I actually went to Raleigh and had opportunity to speak with numerous, uh, law enforcement entities and county, uh, officials regarding how they have their nine-one-one system set up. Originally, we had a nine-one-one system that was fire and EMS, and then police was dispatched separately. The police, the Sheriff's Office dispatched for all the, the law enforcement in county municipalities, Sheriff's Office and others. And it was two separate communication systems, Louis was actually the supervisor as a part of that. Uh, the decision was made to integrate those together where we'd have more streamlined services, and there would be more benefit of having technology and personnel, especially when it comes to if one person's sick, you have the ability to draw from a bigger well of trained dispatchers. Uh, if you need to go to the restroom, it's hard when you're the only dispatcher, it's the simple things that we don't appreciate. Anyway, the board, uh, the two groups were merged, that merger has been overall a hugely successful endeavor, but it did, uh, leave behind some of the things that I want to address, and just kind of pointed list, second thing that brings it up is not this discussion, but the fact that our nine-one-one's radio system here in the county has been deficient for years. And that deficiency was never really addressed, because you have a lot of different entities, everybody utilizing the system, but nobody really collectively come together to say, we've got a problem, or that we need to advance this, and we need new Magicon, we need new radios, that tower at Big Knob needs some work. So there was really no avenues, other than just one person to have a conversation with the nine-one-one director or the county manager. Uh, it lacked the multi-diverse agency input of police, fire and EMS, as far as sitting down in the discussion, either monthly or quarterly, to talk about projected future technology needs and infrastructure needs, also for the advancement and implementation of these necessities, how are we going to do that? How are we going to implement, where are we going to get funding? So part of it's to work on that, is to have an advisory board that's made up of, uh, police, fire and EMS personnel, while also with the emergency management director and the county manager, and, uh, I would recommend maybe one or two county commissioners to work together on that, um, round table, to have routine discussions, uh, and to have meetings to discuss those things also. Uh, to create better lines of partner communication and feedback. If you have hot springs, uh, which is not a county entity, or you have, uh, EMS, which is not a county entity, you have, uh, all the fire departments which aren't county entities, giving them a place at the table to have input as to how a service that's provided to them is provided. Uh, we manage the nine-one-one system, we have a nine-one-one director, we have employees that work for the county, uh, and they provide those services, but they provide them for a lot of entities that aren't county entities. And so the idea would be to provide those users with input from out, from outside of the county, to be able to dis, uh, discuss issues such as, uh, safety protocols for the frontline responders, uh, hopefully to facilitate more family cohesion across the agencies regarding our nine-one-one system and the folks that work there. I worked in, uh, nine-one-one at Asheville Police Department, I was injured, and they sent me up there, and I worked, I think I worked two days, maybe three, and they sent me away. I couldn't do it, there's just too much going on, I couldn't multitask, I couldn't keep up, and they said, all right, Garrison, you're going to, they call it the pit. It was the front desk, and they put me dealing with people out of all things. But it's a difficult job, and having, having the ability to have that communication, to promote conversations, where if a nine-one-one dispatcher says, we've noticed your officers or your, your, uh, uh, fire department personnel are always doing this, and it would be so much better if we changed that protocol with your department to say, do it this way. Or if they say, well, you know, the law enforcement says when, you know, when we stop a car, we, we would like to discuss the ability to do this. So it opens up those lines of communication to enhance overall the radio communication for our community, because ultimately, the communities are the recipients of what takes place, so I'd like for this board to entertain, either re-initiating or creating a nine-one-one advisory board consisting of, uh, EM one, the emergency management director, the nine-one-one director, uh, someone from the Sheriff's Office, someone from EMS, uh, at least two people is recommended from the, uh, Fire Association Board, uh, and, uh, one representative from each police department, to be able to sit at that board, and as far as how they meet, it's, leave that up to them, whatever's necessary in the onset to get started, and then, uh, at least to meet quarterly. That's my discussion.
So is it your desire, um, or is it the desire of this board, uh, to start working on legwork for that? Uh, do we, and if so, uh, does someone want to make that in form of a motion?
Well, I'd like to, uh, I mean, or, is there EOC, are they working on a re-accreditation? At this time? And if so, with that re-accreditation, that sounds like that'd be, had to happen, right?
I'm not sure.
I'll be, I'll be the answer. I'll be the answer on that one.
Okay.
If they are, then, you know, we're going to have to anyway. Because that's how you stay effective under that system. It's to have a advisory board, but I, I think.
Fair enough.
I'd like, you know, wires ran out.
I just know the problem we have now is the lines of communication sometimes get blurred.
Yeah.
Where if a dispatcher's having a problem with the, with the first responder, whether it's police, fire, EMS, they don't really have a recourse to say, hey, you need to do it this way, you need to help, you're killing us here. You know, do this different, the same way from the first responder back to dispatch, uh, the recourse is limited, but there is at least some recourse versus the other way, because we're dealing with entities that are outside, uh, the purview of control.
And it's not necessarily that it's a complaint department, it's more or less a way to filter constructive criticism.
Well, and I think it's to improve, uh, improve the overall product. You know, if we're having issues with the radio, it shouldn't take five or 10 years to, to, yeah, if you had an advisory board five years ago, this radio system would have been beginning to be addressed long before it become such a piece of junk. You know, we've let it get to the point where it's a huge safety issue now, and I mean, it's, it's detrimental, we have to fix it. There's, there's, there's not a lot, there's not an opportunity for a round table of communication on all aspects, it's not just a complaint section. It's, uh, it's in all aspects of job performance and, and the equipment performance and procedures and policies that can be implemented, uh, on all parties to say, I, this would definitely make this flow better. They're under a lot of stress, of telecommunicators are under a huge amount of stress when those calls are coming in, and there's usually just two of them there, sometimes three, and there's a lot going on, they're fielding a lot of calls, so.
All right, so, um, let's, uh, I guess, uh, at this point, the best way to categorize it would be, let's, uh, have the county manager work on that, bring us a plan, and maybe this needs to, uh, reappear on the agenda for March if we have all our ducks in a row. Very good?
I could do it.
All right, fair enough. Any additional discussion? All right, thank you, no need for a motion or anything at this time, then we'll just go ahead and leave it at that.
Thank you, man.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And, uh, up next is our interim county manager, Rod Honeycutt, with our county managers' report.
Right, I'm going to start by acknowledging, rather than go full deal outs for tonight, first one is to pursue the courthouse objective with the board with the, uh, Mates Director. Second one, with the COOP extension, the salary increase with the Finance Director. Cell phone tower, uh, fee discussion with Chairman Garrison, and re-vocation of the nine-one-one advisory board a way ahead. Those are the parts I have to capture, right? Uh, first item will be, uh, county managers' update tonight, every meeting needs one PowerPoint slide to go forward once. Um, so last time we had a discussion on the mowing contract, and we're right on the mowing contract. So you have a chart in front of you, there were twenty-five sites that were approved during the last meeting, uh, you give the authority to sign that contract, enter into it, uh, and start looking at the new contract for twenty-twenty-three. Um, so above the green line are the contracts that were, the sites that were contracted. Below the green, green line are the sites that the landfill had been to verbally, uh, that had been paid out of county funds. So moving forward, we will consolidate all of the contracts, all the mowing sites into two contracts. And what that equals out to is, Emery Cody, um, has the equal amount, and Matthew Garrett has the equal amount. Last year, we got sixty-five thousand dollars split between the two, and it'll be those sixty-five thousand dollars going forward, plus the new three sites, which is a fairground, a playground, and a Marshall Island gym. Each site is a mowing and leaf removal with a maximum of forty visits per site. The bottom line is, there'll be two contracts supporting twenty-eight locations. Parks and Rec will remain in the lead for the landfill with, uh, maintenance, uh, and the landfill in support of Parks and Rec. IT will establish a call work center, so if you have a site that needs to be mowed again, they will be able to go on the webpage and update and request that site be mowed. And then, at some point in twenty-twenty-four, I recommend we do a cost benefit analysis of bringing this back into the county as an employee versus having a contract solution. So if your questions, you know.
First question comes to mind for me is, uh, we've got, uh, looks like ten collection centers and landfill, which make eleven properties. Um, why wouldn't that fall under the budget of the Enterprise Fund?
It does, it was paid out of the Enterprise Fund.
Okay.
And that money will be paid under one check or two checks to it, it'll be consolidated before it goes out.
I got you.
It's come out of two funds.
So, so the Enterprise Fund will be paying for the landfill and the collection site mowing? It just ultimately, it's a reimbursement, I guess, they, we pay the bill, they reimburse us, is that how it works?
Carrie, check my homework. True statement.
True, it will come, every bit of it will come out of the landfill, the Enterprise Fund. I'll just, it's a contract that we just pay out of two different funds.
Every bit of those eleven properties, right? Okay. And so this is, this sort of works i- in reverse of the way that the, um, uh, that, that any subsidy that we pay to the landfill for, for, uh, subsidized folks with their garbage fees, correct? It would be the reverse effect?
Not necessarily. I, look at it as, like, uh, we pay French fry electric for electric for county funds, we all pay the mowing people for county funds, we pay like, French fry electric for enterprise funds, with enterprise funds.
Okay, I got it.
So it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't matter.
So it comes directly out of that account? It's not any, there's no reimbursement or anything like that? I got you, very good, thank you. You verbalized it much better than I did, thank you.
I have a few questions. One is, we paid seventy-five dollars to mow the courthouse. That seems awful high. There's sure more grass there than I saw this afternoon. And I'm just being facetious, Jesse actually does a great job, uh, usually, and he's, he's, I think, what we default to in, in assessing each one of these. I'm just thinking, maybe that's because they have to collect the, the grass there, and they have to weed it around all the obstacles, I'm not sure, but it just seemed kind of high. Really, the main question, under the, uh, collection centers, were all those centers that were already being serviced?
Yes, sir.
Why is one of them blue, because it's moving over to?
Three of them move over to make sure we have equal amount of work between the two contracts.
That's what I thought.
Marcy, collection center, Edge Chapel, and Bone Camp Center will move.
And we're adding, actually only adding three locations, the playground at the Health Department, uh, the Marshall Island Gym, and I think you and I talked about that, and that is just the gym, the actual land, uh,
Yes, sir.
is different. The fairgrounds, and there was questions that were brought to me about the fairgrounds, because that's contracted out, but, uh, it sounds like the, the contract that we entered into is for maintenance of the fairgrounds. With that.
The contract is written that Lee C. will do the maintenance of the fairgrounds, but it does not stipulate landscaping. And for, and we've been doing the landscaping.
So that contract comes renewed this year, we can renegotiate that if needed. And, uh, I, the, I appreciate the IT web base for submitting work orders. Uh, uh, just want to reiterate that both the contractors did excellent work last year, but the main complaint revolved around little things, trimming and spraying, and I know that, uh, spraying, uh, you have to get your license to do that, so I'm stressed that those two, uh, contractors make sure that happens this time.
They've been very gracious, and we also negotiated so these prices lower. So they just, it's like, they can get, so there was a negotiation process. So what I'm asking for the board to do tonight is grant me permission to adjust the contract for FY twenty-three.
Hang on, I got a question. So this collection sites was mowed last year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, it says twenty-five sites, there's actually twenty-eight sites there with three more added, makes, makes thirty-one sites.
Maybe my math is, I'm jacked up.
Thirty-one was what I was impressed, gonna be.
Six, eight, fourteen, and eleven, twenty-five. Twenty-eight.
Yeah, just in the, where it says twenty-five sites. Plus you add the other three down here. It's thirty-one sites.
I got six and eight is fourteen, plus eleven gives me twenty-five, plus three gives me the twenty-eight. There's though, you have three that's listed three, that's why.
Yeah, you've got three that are twice, I made the same mistake. Yeah, th- those three on the, on the lower left over there on your graph.
Okay. What's the sixteen hundred and fifty dollars there, what?
That was what's paid out of the landfill fees last year to cover these sites.
And.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Also, it's got a maximum of forty visits, that's, that's awful lot, I mean, from April to October, you're just looking at thirty-two weeks. Did they mow these twice, some of them twice a week, or can we? I mean, I think a hundred thousand dollars or sixty thousand dollars is a lot of money to pay for, for mowing.
You got to have to judge, the law, the legal language in it says for, up to a maximum of forty times. And, you know, I think it's probably a seasonal environmental, that it rained too much, the cold factor, gives us the authority to go faster, slower than on the weather.
I mean, especially the collection sites, I mean, you can weed eat those in five minutes.
So if, and if we have a drought, for example, you know, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, you know, we're not going to have mow anything that's not growing. So, I mean, at that point.
Well, I'm going to reiterate it.
Yes.
These numbers weren't just arbitrary, uh, Jesse looked at historic, so that's the reason I was saying seventy-five dollars on the courthouse, but the reality of this, they looked at historic, how much time was having to be allocated to mow these, that's the reason we knew roughly what it was going to be, uh, as far as time allocation.
The legwork went up to last year's contract, there's an extensive time factor associated with each of the sites, uh, that was used.
It's hard to tell, I mean, if you're in a rainy season, it's going to, and then you can't mow during that rainy season. It, it's a lot of guesswork. The best thing to do is to look at the number of times you mowed the year before, and then, and then sort of use that as what.
Carrie, so we get billed monthly on the amount of work done, if they don't mow, they don't get, they don't get paid for that lot. So they actually turn in what's been mowed, what's been requested mowed, so it's not just a cart block, you get a paycheck for mowing, so it's a, as services render.
That's a good, good analogy.
But with all these, if they mowed every one of these forty times, I mean, you're looking over a hundred thousand dollars, right? Lot of money.
The, uh, fairgrounds, playground, and island, I guess, were those systems worked by our maintenance folks last year?
Yes.
If we sell that island gym, we get out from underneath that one.
Can Marshall not take care of that little section we got?
Uh, we, we asked the question, but we didn't get an answer by the time of this meeting, but we have, that question is out there.
They have a contractor in place also. If he's there, um, taking twenty minutes, whatever it takes to do it. But I have office call.
I mean, we gave them the land and, and are going to give them the proceeds from the building for the, a- as well, so, I mean, I, personal, my, my personal opinion is, is that, that they could probably hook us up on that and take care of themselves. But we're, we haven't gotten official response back from the town yet, but the question has been asked, the request has been made. But we're, we haven't gotten official response back from the town yet, but the question has been asked, the request has been made.
Well, I think too, in, in looking forward to the next year, because we've all discussed it, and the Colonel's actually mentioned it about looking at whether, how that's gonna play out in the next year, we'll have a lot of data from two years of mowing to be able to look at it and see what, how many times they actually mowed it, and how much it actually cost us, and how much it would cost to, to sustain him, the sufficient number of employees to, so we can make some comparisons, so.
And I assume we kept our mowing equipment. We didn't sell it in surplus, correct? Some of it may be in poor shape, but I think we kept it, didn't we?
And it should be noted, we're not paying them for forty visits. We pay them per visit. I think that's a good point as well. They're having to mow forty times. We got.
But, so if it rains a lot, they, they're gonna mow it twice a week?
Well, it could potential, if we ask them to.
You really wanna know that answer? We can get that, just as a general, we can, they can tell us how many times they mow.
So Jesse's collecting the data of Doc. You got Daniel feeding him Parks and Rec mowing, and you got Sam feeding landfill. So if they need it, they'll call and request additional mowing, but I don't see that it's gonna be any abuse. They'll drop them by, just to mow the mow. They said there's enough controls in place that will be good stewards of taxpayer dollars.
And that would be Chris at Parks and Rec, right? Not Daniel?
Daniel, Chris, I missed both.
That's all right. Okay, just make sure. I didn't know if Daniel was in the mix somewhere, and I wouldn't show.
Not yet. We'll get him in there.
Uh, that's all good.
Well, my thinking on it is give those collection site guys a weed eater and, in their spare time, go out there and weed eat.
We, we discussed that with Sam.
Then we'd be complaining because they wasn't checking cards. I will say that, uh, two things of note. One is, uh, the teach facility does use their, uh, their available resources to manage that ground and also some of the ground adjoining, joining it, and there may be some opportunity, in the future, to use, uh, other resources to offset some of these expenditures, so.
But we can't let the trustees to go to the playground, so we're not, they can't do that. So it's all good. All right.
Well, I think the playground ended up being one of those that was questioned about because it was needed maintenance prior to
Correct.
the end of last year's contract service. Ethan, what needs to take place here?
You just need to award the contract as the.
Give me permission to modify the contract, including FY twenty-three, three additional sites.
Awarded as recommended.
I still move. The motion by Vice Chairman Garrison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
I'm afraid not to.
Garrison and Bill are the only two that have enough spare time to do it, Jeremy, so.
Hey, Tim, subject question will transition to board appointments.
I wanted to say one thing. When you've got all these different places and you've got a trailer, and you're pulling the trailer around, it takes a lot of time to do that. So thirty dollars if you don't have a ten-foot square, you spent an hour getting there, so, you know, you're working for about ten dollars.
That's very true, Bill.
Yeah, I wouldn't drive that much.
You can kill days' time running around the long ways.
I think they were very gracious in keeping their prices the same on twenty-two, twenty-three, thirty-three.
I was under the impression that we're gonna be community centers on here.
You've got.
Edge Chapel and Beach Green.
Those are the center example fields.
Pop way up under Emory Cody.
And Walnut.
I thought we had some new ones, new ones.
I'm not trying to do any, I'll run it to ground Jesse.
It's all good. It's just, that's all good. Move forward.
All right, so, um, up next is, well, um, county board appointments. So we've got some vacancies here. This is under the, uh, county manager's section C. You wanna lead those?
You got three board of health, performance and reappointments with names listed, and the potential of fourteen below that.
And just for the sake of knowledge, uh, one of the board of health, uh, positions is Dr. Adams. One of the requirements of the board of health is that there be a dentist as a representative on the board of health, and, uh, Dr. Adams is the only, uh, applicant that, that meets that criteria. So I'll, I'll make the motion that Dr. Adams be reappointed to the board of health for a three-year term.
Second.
So got, uh, motion by me, second by Vice Chairman Garrison. Any discussion? Hearing none, all go to a vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Uh, next up is, uh, replacing Andrew Thomas, who was a, a citizen, and he had, he has reached his maximum term limit, and therefore he must be replaced. So open the floor for nominees this time from the, uh, from the applications we've received.
Chairman, I have to add my motion. We nominate Joey Chandler to replace Andrew Thomas.
So motion by, uh, Commissioner Wyatt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hensley. Any discussion? Hearing none, go to a vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Up next, uh, is, uh, the spot currently, uh, assigned to a commissioner. And I have, uh, completed my second three-year term on that board. So if anyone else would love to, uh, to jump in there, I'd be more than happy to share those duties and, and, uh, let somebody else take it.
You can do it, can't you?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that, uh, Jeremy Hensley take that responsibility. He's willing to do so.
Got a motion, uh, by Vice Chairman Garrison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Briggs. Any additional discussion? Any discussion?
You give it to Jeremy?
Hearing none, move to a vote. All in favor?
Thank you, Jeremy.
Unanimous. Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, Jeremy. My wife and my daughter thank you too. That's one more night I get to spend at home. It's only every other month, so it's not, not, not a bad commitment, and they generally treat you pretty nice, so you'll be, be all right.
Next one is library board of trustees, Jason York.
And on that board, that comes from a recommendation from the library board of trustees. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
It is.
And that's what it says.
All right. And I believe their recommendation is, uh, if I'm not mistaken, is Mary Dixon from Hot Springs, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, I move Mary Dixon be appointed to the library board of trustees.
Uh, got a motion by Vice Chairman Garrison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous. Mary Dixon is now on library board of trustees. And I believe that takes care of all the vacancies at this time. Is that correct? Am I looking at that?
We got appointed board commissioner representation. Smart Start, Land of Sky Rural Planning Organization.
Are those up now? They're up for an appointment?
I agree. Thanks, too.
Today, our Smart Start was previously filled by a commissioner and was outgoing. Um, and then the Land of Sky Rural Planning Organization has requested that the board consider an alternate, um, to the appointment that was previously made.
And the alternate, uh, was also an outgoing commissioner, uh, from the, from previous, so, um, so let's see, Smart Start, let's take, we'll just take them in order here. Um, there's an open spot, and it, that's, that position needs to be filled by a board of, uh, commission member. So anyone interested in participating in the Smart Start program?
I'll take it.
So, um, I'll make the motion that, uh, Vice Chairman Garrison serve on that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hensley. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous for Commitment Vice Chairman Garrison. And for the Land of Sky Rural Planning Organization, I'm already on that board, so you guys can't nominate me. Um, so it's gonna come from the rest of you, and basically you would, um, your only requirement would be to attend on the, on the months that I cannot. So it's, um.
Trap.
It's, it's.
I made.
Alan White. Got a motion, motion by Commissioner, uh, Hensley, uh, for, uh, Commissioner Wyatt to serve as the alternate, and we've got a second by Commissioner Briggs. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Bill's just glad he didn't get nominated for that, right? All right. And then, um, just, uh, food for thought there, you see the upcoming vacancies for next month. You'll have, uh, we've only got, uh, one that we're aware of at this time, so, and that would be for the Mountain Area Workforce Development Board.
Do we have any applicants for that, because of you? Excellent.
Subject question will transition to eleven D, which is the train contract.
Correct.
Carrie, vice director cover part of that in, or, uh, Carrie, make sure I'm not telling the story. We moved a portion of the lap salary to cover maintenance, uh, and it's included three items inside a train. Uh, one of the items was a state-directed deficiency that had to be corrected and put in place at the jail. And so that was a large bill, and I can't remember the amount of money. It's up there in the thousands. Kind of left us out of the choice. We had to do it. And the other two are maintenance and periodic maintenance to move us forward through the years.
So one, a- and just for the record, and again, you two correct me if I'm wrong, but for the purpose of those here in attendance and those that may be watching at home, um, the state essentially required us, in order to keep that facility, uh, in operation, the state required that we, that we enter into a, a program to maintain and train, uh, and train, not T-R-A-I-N, but train the HVAC company, um, is, uh, who has, um, who, uh, who, who we have turned to for those services.
Correct. They have a, um, obligation to check, monitor, and report, uh, that system status that's associated with our system.
So if the system is not functional, they report directly to the state?
Yes.
Okay.
And to us. I mean, no, for us, uh, it's a immediate, immediate need requirement.
And what did we do last year?
I think we didn't have it last year. That's why we got in trouble with the state, correct? Is that right, Donnie?
That's right. We had the problem that occurred, which we were instructed, and we were told that you will do this, so we're not gonna have it up. That's my understanding. It's the way it came down. We had no choice.
I remember this discussion.
So I mean, we're, it's, we're thankful that Train stepped up to do it. See, that's somebody. We can't do it air on our own. If it shuts down and it doesn't work, you're gonna have a fire or an emergency at a major facility.
So what do we, this is a twenty-seven thousand dollar thing, and we were, we were glad to get, get it. If I remember correctly, we were glad to pay twenty-seven thousand dollars.
We were glad for Train to come in and take care of twenty-seven thousand dollars, take on this responsibility so that it can operate there.
We'd be housing other places if we didn't.
That's right.
We'd be paying to house all those inmates elsewhere.
It covers more than just monitoring too.
With a false dollar, your income.
There's a certain amount of.
It's monitoring, and it's a five thousand dollars worth of, uh,
Maintenance.
Own cost parts and materials. There's a whole billion of stuff it covers.
Correct. It's an unfunded mandate.
That a train basically equipped, I guess.
Or assume, I assume so, but I don't know for fact, but I believe in this case.
In the terms that you bring me to the equipment, it says train in front of it, so I'm pretty sure that it's something they manufactured.
So break this down for me, Colonel, because I looked through it, uh, over the weekend, and I looked through it again today.
Those contracts all kind of ran together. I had to go back.
Twenty-six thousand, but then I see another one that said.
One contract's twenty-six thousand, the second one is fourteen thousand and change, and I think one is fifty-four hundred, and three.
And they're all three with train?
Yes.
And their contracts are different for?
One's to correct the deficiency, and the other two are to maintain and monitor the new equipment.
Does that come out of Sheriff's Department budget, or is that?
It came out of our maintenance budget. And that's why Jesse got the zero, uh, and we had to move the lap salary, so it was covered.
The maintenance budget's been zero for two months.
So to answer your question, that needs, I would assume that needs to appear in the sheriff's budget going forward.
For sustainability forward in the FY twenty-three.
Now that we know what it is.
It'll just be a line item increase on, uh, maintenance. So when we see that new budget request, it'll have an increase for this contract. I see that, uh, it has year one, two, three, or is this a one-year contract, annual contract that we can renew, or?
See, it's renewable unless we opt out of.
So it's a, it's a one-year contract with four, four-year option, correct?
We can opt out anytime up to February of twenty twenty-eight.
Yeah, we, we can opt, we can agree not to renew it. It'll automatically renew unless we say one.
At the same price.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Now, there, there's a provision in it that if they choose, they can opt out at any time.
And does this have the language in it, the addendum that you, that you always require that our contracts have? You've reviewed these contracts and found them in good order?
I, I reviewed them as to form. I didn't review them as to price or substance, because that's beyond my capabilities. But as to legal form, where they're deemed to land it on to it, it may all be the requirements I would have liked to.
Carrie, it's, uh, based on your previous presentation, the, uh, this would be paid for by the, through the slap salaries and all the other.
And it's currently will be paid out of, uh, maintenance. Once they, once this is signed, if you agree to it, it'll be paid out of maintenance, and then come July, the new, we can be sure that the, it will only be twenty thousand dollars annually, not forty-six. The twenty-six is the one time, and then after that, it's twenty thousand annually for the upkeep.
Thank you. Good information. Thank you. Anybody have any additional questions on that?
Got a bunch of top ones up here.
I know we do. So, um, at this point, since we've removed that from the consent agenda and moved it into a regular action item, we need to approve this, these expenditures. Is that correct, Donnie?
That's correct.
All right. So at this point, um, assuming there are no other questions at this time to be addressed, is there a motion that we approve these contracts? A motion by Commissioner Wyatt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hensley. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote. All in favor? Unanimous.
Carrie, may I talk to the board? I'll talk real quickly.
Still under your, uh, still county manager update, you're all right.
It's not even, you know, we work and live in a fabulous place, and we have some great communities. And we have a couple of pictures here that we want to share with you, uh, any audience of some of the good work, uh, this business and all. So if we go forward a couple of slides, uh, to get to the photos.
So, this is, uh,
There you go. You're good.
This, I'm gonna brag on my, you can. This, I'm going to brag on my community a little bit. You can call me Wood by life if you want to, whatever you want to call me, but, uh, this, this is the upper law community organization, in conjunction with the local churches over there, mainly run by Foster Creek Baptist Church. Elder team, which puts us on this, you know, when we advertise our turkey shoots, that is wood that has been bought by donations from the churches, local churches, and people, and the turkey, turkey shoots. Go to the next slide, there's four. There was seven or eight wood switters there, there were over thirty men, showed up last Saturday, and Foster Creek Baptist Church, their ladies fed us. We only, we split wood until about one o'clock, until Foster Creek fed us, and it was over, at that point. Those piles of wood are seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars a load. We have a locker that gives us a great deal. On that, we've delivered, Eldridge and his son and a couple of other guys in the community have delivered over three-hundred loads of wood to those in need so far this year. And they have done a great job with the money. They have over eleven-thousand dollars still left in that account. So I just wanted to brag on, brag on them a little bit tonight. They've done a great job.
And I'm going to brag on them even further. They don't require to, for people that they're in need, it's not a requirement that they live only in that community. They serve our entire county with that wood. So it's a, a, a prime example of what, what our people do for each other, and that's what makes Madison County a little more unique than some of the other counties around us. And we're very, very grateful for the folks to get up there and do that sort of thing. Alan, appreciate your involvement in that.
All right, Jim, subject question, I can please him up, Dave.
Thank you, sir. We have the need to go into closed session to deal with some personnel items. I'm sorry, sorry, we need to return back to special session. So we're going to adjourn this meeting. There we go. All right, I've got it. Thank you, Donnie. Appreciate you looking out for me. So this meeting, is there a motion to adjourn? Got a motion by Commissioner Briggs, second by Commissioner Hensley. All in favor? This meeting stays adjourned.